Wait for Mike to give me thumbs up.
Okay.
Well, the other lady was very honest.
We can all rise and pledge.
No, I, I, I first.
Love that. Chris, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, our veterans, those fighting the good fight in Ukraine, and those suffering from the conflict in the Middle East. Thank you. Stand for the American Creed. Katie?
The American, Americans Creed by William Tyler Page. I believe in the United States of America as the government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the government, a democracy in a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrificed our lives and fortunes. Therefore, believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Sal?
Ms. Janet?
So, lady, you?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, spoke before. Yeah, ask the question.
My name is Jen Price and I'm head of the Garden Club.
And just give your address, Jan, for the record.
Okay. Is that right? Can you hear me better?
No.
It's for the live feed.
It's for the video at home. Oh, okay. Okay. Um, your name and address, though, she was.
Jen Price and Jen Moreland, New Milford. I'm here on behalf of the Garden Club. As most of you know, or all of you know, we have been celebrating our 100th anniversary this year. This is our final act that I would like to present to the mayor on behalf of the Garden Club. It is a picture of what we have outside, and it is the dedication that has been written from, by the National Garden Club. So, I would like to present this to the mayor and to the town council. I also would say we have done one more thing as our last element, and that is we planted over a thousand daffodils that you will all see next week.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you to the Garden Club. You guys are amazing for all the good work you do in town. I mean, the green right now is absolutely beautiful. All the flowers are planted here for all our citizens. We can't thank you guys. Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Nice.
Um, Ms. Justine, you are.
Uh, I'm Justine McCabe. I live at 88 Trunisky Road in New Milford. And as the mayor mentioned in the end of his prayer, uh, the war between Israel and Hamas is now in its 65th day. Israeli and Palestinian civilian casualties have been enormous and continual. Whatever their party affiliation or views of the conflict, many Americans, in fact, a majority, and people worldwide have called for a long-term ceasefire in the name of humanity. Recognizing that our government has enormous political and fiscal power to urge a ceasefire, many U.S. municipalities, including a few towns that are smaller than ours, have passed resolutions with the same message: ceasefire now in Israel and Gaza. Therefore, I ask that the mayor and members of the town council, to you all, uh, put the following proposed resolution on your agenda, which reads as, whereas all life is precious and the targeting of civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law, and whereas between October 7th and December 10th, 2023, armed violence claimed the lives of at least 1,200 Israelis, wounding thousands more and nearly 18,000 Palestinians, 70% of whom are women and children. Whereas, uh, whereas the loss of all lives, Israeli and Palestinian are grievable, whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk also for starvation if a ceasefire is not achieved, especially to deliver humanitarian aid, water, food, electricity. Shall I stop? Okay.
I'm sorry. Are you supposed to be calling?
Okay. Whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk also for starvation if a ceasefire to end especially, uh, achieved especially to deliver humanitarian aid, water, electricity, food, fuel, medical care and medicines to Gaza without delay, and whereas a majority of Americans, 68%, support a ceasefire, and whereas members of the town council, you all, as our locally elected leaders, represent American values of generosity, dignity, and the equality of all people, and respect for human rights, we share the responsibility to uphold these values and speak up in times of injustice. And whereas the federal government holds immense power to save Palestinian and Israeli lives, now therefore be it resolved that the town of New Milford call upon our U.S. Congregational, Congressional delegation, both in the Senate and House of Representatives, to join us in, one, urging the Biden administration to immediately call for and facilitate an unlimited ceasefire to urgently end the current violence. Two, call upon the Biden administration to promptly send and facilitate the entry of humanitarian assistance to Gazan's. Be it further resolved that upon passage of this resolution, I hope, a copy be provided to the New Milford delegation to our Connecticut State Legislature, to the United States Congressional delegations from Connecticut, Connecticut Governor Ned Lamont, and President of the United States, Joseph Biden. I want to note in ending this resolution that, um, resolutions have been passed in many U.S. municipal governments, including Akron, Ohio, Atlanta, Georgia, Bridgeport, Connecticut has a pending vote, uh, the town of Carboro, North Carolina, which has a population of 20,000 or so, uh, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights in Michigan, Oakland, California, the town of Easton, PA, which has a, a population of 27,000 people, Providence, Rhode Island, Richmond, California, Seattle, Washington, and Wilmington, Delaware. So in sum, I, I urge you to consider this resolution as a representative of all the people of New Milford for their highest aspirations of peace and goodwill among everyone, especially at this time of year. And I'm going to pass out the copy of the proposed resolution. Thank you for your attention.
Number one, Tom, for questions. Okay. Katie?
Uh, yes, I'd like to suspend the rules to add an item, which would be item 4D with, uh, this is for a donation that's been made, uh, by a resident to New Milford Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Everybody okay with that?
All in favor? Any opposition? Any abstentions?
For the next, I'd like to suspend the rules to add an agenda item. Um, motion to add an item regarding discussion and possible action on the proposed resolution for an immediate long-term ceasefire in Israel and Gaza.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does not carry. Okay, next.
Okay, item four, consent agenda. I'd like to move, we approve 4A, prior minutes from November 27th, 4B, tax collector refunds, 4C, uh, donation to Parks and Rec, uh, $3,100 from Cooper and Meredith Schilling for the purchase of a park bench and a plaque in memory of Eugene Schilling. Uh, the bench would match those that are currently on the green. They request a donation be placed in the park gift fund, and they like to thank the family of Eugene Schilling. Item 4D would be that Parks and Rec would like permission to have us approve their accepting the donation of a ping pong table from Mr. Gary Devis and Ms. Patty Farrington. Uh, it's a ping pong to be used for summer camp and other programs. The approximate value is $100, and they'd like to thank Ms., if I'm saying his name wrong, I'm sorry, Mr. Devis and Ms. Farrington for their generosity.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item five, mayor's comments.
Thank you, Katie. So first, for those celebrating Hanukkah, may I have blessed Hanukkah. Next is congratulations to the New Milford Bulls varsity cheer. They're, uh, seventh best in the country this year. So amazing, they went down to Florida and competed, so congratulations to them. Also want to congratulate the, uh, coaches and staff and the Bulls board and parents. Obviously, it's a big endeavor to bring a team down to Florida, so congratulations. Also want to congratulate the New Milford youth wrestlers. They had their kickoff classic on Sunday at New Milford High School, very, very well attended by town, surrounding towns, uh, uh, young wrestlers that were there, and it was great to see our, uh, Green Wave wrestlers there as well. Want to thank PJ Lilis and Odd Fellows for their toy, toy drive to benefit Social Services Santa Fund over the weekend, and, uh, thank you for all they do at Odd Fellows. Want to thank Chief Sarudo, who's, I think he's here in attendance, and, uh, Officer Toro, the men and women of the New Milford Police Department, and our New Milford cadets as they did a shop with a cop at Walmart to benefit, uh, those individuals, uh, with special needs. So chief, thank you. It was great to see the smiling faces on those youngsters, and, uh, thank you to you and the men and women for that. Thank you. Also want to thank Theater Works. They started their 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee, uh, at Theater Works. That was a great, um, uh, theatrical performance they had there.
You participated, didn't you?
I actually, I did. It was pretty cool. It was pretty fun.
I thought I heard that.
So, yeah, thank you for allowing me to do that as well. Also, thank you Turner Milford High School Fall Athletes. They had their award ceremony last week. It was great to see all those banners, uh, you know, coming, uh, to fruition, to light up that wonderful, uh, gym that we just redid. So that was great. Also want to thank, uh, VFW Commander Jim Delancy and the VFW for hosting our Pearl Harbor Memorial Service, which was on the 7th, and I want to thank them. Also want to thank Senator Harding, State Representative Buckby and Callahan, they attended as well, and, uh, said a few words. Also want to thank Pat McGuire, he does an amazing job with the bagpipes, American Legion Chaplain Dan Sullivan for the invocation, Buck Oviet did the National Anthem like he always does, and Kathy for the POW MI Forget Me Nots. Also Chief Sarudo was there with the deputy chief as well, our honor guard, and Jeff McRiordan played taps, uh, as we put the wreath down, uh, in the Houstonic River. Want to thank the New Milford High School Band and band parents for the beautiful wreaths that you see on Town Hall. Look absolutely beautiful, so thank you to them. Want to thank the Lions Club President Mount Roche and the Lions Club members and volunteers as they did their annual senior Christmas party, which was held at the VFW, and, uh, packed house, and it was great, uh, that they do that each and every year. Want to thank the scouts and the, uh, Scottico Lion Leos Club as they helped, uh, out, uh, providing, uh, the lunches to the seniors. Uh, also want to congratulate Mr. Fitz and the Sarah Noble Band and all the volunteers as they did, um, a greeting with Santa, the Santa breakfast at Sarah Noble, so that was great to see, lots and lots of people there for that. Uh, then moving on to New Milford Police Department statistics, and I'm sure the chief will talk a little bit more about this, as we continue to really focus on traffic, uh, here, uh, statistics, uh, year over year, so this time last year, there was motor vehicle stops 1,350. So far this year, in the year 2023, we've had 2,137. That is up of an increase of 787, or up about 58%. Motor vehicle accidents, and as we said, one is too many, uh, but the trend continues to be one of, of it coming down. In the year 2022, there was 884, 137 were in parking lots. This year so far, in 2023, at the same time, it's 842, 128 of them are in parking lots, that's less 42, which is about a 5% reduction. Also want to thank Fire Marshal Kevin Reynolds and the Assistant Fire Marshal, uh, as they had a successful fire extinguisher training at Kimberly Clark, and, uh, Ed Pagan is our Assistant Fire Marshal. And want to thank all the employees and management for making that a success. Also want to thank the Brookfield Fire Marshal's Office as they shared their training setup with our office. And if you have a business, if you're watching this either now, or if you're watching this, uh, as a recording, and you need fire extinguisher training, they would love to help you with that. You can call their office at 355-6099-860 area code, or email fire marshal at newmilford.org. Uh, also, some of the other things that, uh, we are doing is, the youth agency is doing, uh, My Safe Place, and, uh, this is where the neurodiverse youth and their families can find community, and they're doing this the first and third Mondays of the month at the Max from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. So thank you to Jason and Marie for all that. Introduction to Robotics, and, uh, that's happening at Pettybone, and that's, uh, five Monday classes starting tonight through January 29th, and then no class on Christmas or New Year's, and that's from 4:30 to 5:45. More information, you can contact the New Milford Youth Agency for that. Also, the, uh, youth agency's doing a sensory-friendly visit with Santa and Miss Claus, December 14th, that's at 6:30 to 7:30 at the youth agency. And crafts and refreshments will be available for that. Ice skating lessons on Saturdays, January 6th through February 10th, from 9:45 AM to 10:45 AM, ages 6 to 17. Uh, cost is $90, non-residents is 110, and that's through New Milford Park and Rec. Dog training with Donna, New Milford Park and Rec. That's on Wednesdays, uh, from January 3rd to February 7th, and they have Thursday classes, and then they have Saturday classes. For more information, you can contact Park and Rec. And what I think is, uh, outstanding, I'm excited that we're unveiling this one, this is through our Park and Rec Department. It's the Class Odyssey of the Mind, and a lot of districts do this. Our Park and Rec team is doing this one, and this is a, this is a prob, problem-solving adventure for kids to develop and use their natural creativity to become problem solvers and to find original solutions to unique, open-ended problems. So if you or your child is interested in being a part of this, you can do newmilfordct@myrec.com, and, uh, this is, uh, for, I believe it's 12 classes, I believe, let me see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 10 classes. Additional events going on, Katie, that we have happening, uh, on December 16th, Breakfast with Santa at the VFW, $5 per person, kids under 5 are free. Also on the 16th at 11:00 AM, Candlelight Farms is Christmas on the Hill. They started that last weekend. You had some carriage rides, you had pony rides, uh, face painting, petting zoo, all that wonderful stuff. Then at noon time, you have at St. Francis, Reeds Across America, and also at Center Cemetery. And, uh, if you get a chance, uh, we'd love to see you, either one of these venues, and, uh, you can help us put a wreath on a veteran.
On their gravesite.
On their gravesites, yes, thank you.
You might be able to put one on one or two veterans, but, uh, usually no.
Also on the 16th at 2:00 PM, starting right here, uh, on the town green and Town Hall, is the Celebrate America Committee is doing the Boston Tea Party with a boat and some tea, so that'll be very amazing, learn a little bit of history for those that don't know that.
That's in conjunction with Roger Sherman.
That's in conjunction with Roger Sherman's Daughters of the American Revolution, Dar. Also on the 16th, Brian Cody is doing their Holiday Bazaar, which is at the Max. Great effort, you have to get tickets, so check their website out, I believe there's a few left. Then on the 16th at 6:30 PM, and we do our annual Carol Sing on the Green, which is great, uh, get a lot of big crowds, so if you're interested in, uh, singing along, and then on, at, uh, 7:00 PM is our Holiday Parade of Lights. I was talking to Sean today, and they're figuring they have over 300 vehicles so far this year for the Parade of Lights, so that'll be a big, big.
It'll be Christmas.
Exactly. It'll be a great time.
Yeah, you're right.
Then on December 20th, 11:00 AM, 11:30 AM to 2:00 PM, right here, we're doing, uh, Town Holiday Party, all, everyone's welcome to come in and say hi. We're gonna have, uh, I believe it's the, um, young kids from the Children's Center are gonna sing some songs. We have the choir from Scottico come, which will be excellent, and I believe we're gonna have some of the bell ringers from the First Congregational Church, it'll be a great time, please come, 11:30 AM to 2:00 PM.
And there's refreshments.
And there's refreshments, yep. And, uh, that's what I got, Katie.
Well, that's a lot happening in one weekend ahead, everybody better get some sleep. So, item number six. Yes?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. It's not turned on? Okay, well, let's, let's make sure that people can hear.
Welcome to Jordan Conference now, please. If you are the meeting home, please.
Mary Jane, you in there?
Okay. Katie?
Okay. Uh, item number six, road closure. I'd like to move that we approve the closure of the Southern Crossover on December 16th from 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM for the annual Carol Sing, and this is pending Traffic Authority approval.
Second. Any discussion on the road closure? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number seven, I'd like to move, uh, we approve the transfer of funds, this is from the tax assessor, from contingency, that would be in the amount of $50,000 to the assessor's legal account, number 1041390053108, and this is to cover legal fees.
And Brian, we have Brian here, Brian?
Good evening, everyone. Um, for the record, Brian Lstra, assessor for the town of New Milford. Um, my original budget appropriation for my legal fees was 40,000, uh, basically exhausted, uh, that, uh, appropriation. So, I'm here looking for an additional 50,000 from contingency to basically carry us through the rest of the year, uh, in terms of legal fees.
And Chris?
Yeah.
And Brian, this has been an abnormal year for legal fees?
Yes, uh, part of the issue is, um, uh, last year's budget, I had 140,000, and, uh, delays in our cases before the, the court in New Britain. Um, I, I left, I only spent 56 of the 140, so it's all, it's all of a timing thing. Gotcha. So, cases I thought were gonna get heard and adjudicated back last spring, got pushed to the fall, so that's why, why I'm, I'm here.
How much does that leave in the contingency, do we know?
Uh, so less 50 be 200.
200, that is.
Any other discussion?
Uh, mayor, uh, should I put the, uh, the, in the record, the number of the contingency fund? That was not part of the, what I read. Well, there's fun numbers, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I would just like to add that the, when I said that this would be moved from contingency, that would be the account number 10980000589000. Just so we have that.
We have a motion and a second, and we had discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number eight, I'd like to move the approval formation of a scenic road committee for Buck Rock Road and Heine Road.
Jack?
Is there a second?
Third second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. We have two projects that we've been looking at for a couple years on gravel roads. One is on Heine Road, and the other one is on Bucks Rock Road. Um, if you look at the, um, scenic road, or, they're both scenic roads. Um, if you look at the scenic road ordinance, it allows us to do routine maintenance, which concludes drainage and gravel and things like that. These, uh, two projects are probably a little more than just normal maintenance, so, you know, in discussion with Randy and the mayor, we said we would bring it before the town council for consideration. On Bucks Rock Road, um, we'll be adding, I think, three, probably three to four catch basins on the, uh, what will be the west side of it. I probably got my directions wrong, but anyway, it's, it's opposite side of the houses. And, um, and if you know the area where Julie Bailey lives, there's a big hump in the road, and for years we've had the gravel go into the pipe and into their field, and so they've got a field full of gravel. Um, the, the conceptual design right now is to, um, put some catch basins in that, raise, first of all, bring the road back up to where the original elevation was, um, install three to four catch basins on the, on that side of the road, and then install a pipe through the Bailey's property into a catch basin on Maryall Road. We have been talking with, we, we actually met with the residents on Bucks Rock Road, we talked to them, we gave them two different designs, they liked that one the best. We've talked to the Baileys, they are, right now we are working on easement with Randy, uh, they, they said they would be, um, they would be allowing us an easement, it looks like a good design. The other part of this is, is consideration, and we haven't come to a conclusion, is where the triangle is, where the road intersects with Maryall, it's a bad sightlines, um, where we've talked to them, it's sort of, the, the, some of the residents like the idea of removing it, some residents don't, it's one of the things we would talk about. I think that is a reason in itself to have a scenic road committee. So that's why I'm asking for Bucks Rock. Um, for. So that's why I'm asking for Buck's Rock. For Heine Road, we have met with Marjorie Feldberg and Jeremy Levin. They're here tonight. We've met with them. The hill in their area, we're going to do the opposite. They have catch basins there and an old drainage system. It's not functioning at all. It just doesn't work. If you talk to highway staff, it's not, it's not a very good design. It doesn't work in that location with the slope of the road and everything. We'd like to remove that. We've met with them. We would come up with a design for a swale. Again, raising the elevation, the road is dropping elevation. We raised, put the road back to its original elevation, put a swale in there, and work on some cross drainage to take the water. Again, I think it's a little more than would just be normal maintenance. So when we spoke, we said we would bring this before the town council for consideration of the scenic road committee. Anyway, I have some print designs here if the mayor would like them.
Katie?
Jack, do you envision having the residents, you know, they're involved in this, be part of this committee, correct? They could, would you have them form the committee?
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, we also met with Jeremy and Marjorie already to go over this. So I actually sent them an email saying we'd be meeting tonight. I think it's a good idea to get their input into this, and then we can design it the way they want it.
Yeah, good.
Chris?
Work being performed on both roads, is that going to be strictly by our crew? Or are we going to have contractors coming in at all?
Right now, it's anticipated that our crew would do it. Of course, it's always, we get to the, you know, hopefully we don't have as much rain as we had last year. Part of that's why we want to do this. It's anticipated right now that we would do it, but I hold that back in case we need to go with a contractor.
Okay.
Timing of this, are you anticipating when?
Next spring or summer.
Next, '24?
Yeah.
So anticipating closing the roads, especially Buck Rock?
No.
No.
No, we normally, on this type of job, we would keep it open to traffic, one lane.
Summertime is Buck's Rock's busiest time, so.
We'll try to, we'll work with the residents on making sure that, you know.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kate?
We have a motion and a second.
And we have a second.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Number nine was a finance report.
Greg couldn't make it today, but he wanted to give an update. You do have the numbers in your packet since we're only meeting once this month. So he said he received a draft audit, which he is reviewing. He's pleased to report that we have no material weaknesses or deficiencies to report once again. A very clean audit. He is tied, he goes, I have tied out the profit and loss and balance sheet for the general fund, and I hope to sign off on the audit this week. Once I have a copy of the final audit, I will distribute it in electronic form to the council and board of finance. The pension committee met on December 6th. The committee voted to take $10 million of fixed income instruments and invest that into guaranteed rates of returns of over 5%. Additionally, the committee voted to adjust the asset allocation from a 50-50 split to a 60 equity and 40 fixed income split in an effort to obtain higher returns in the US equity markets. And then he said November financials are not complete, as is it's still early in the month. The meeting in January will have a financial update through December.
Can I add that?
Certainly can.
Great. Okay, item 10, it's the police department. And I would like to make a motion to approve appropriation of $30,000 from their contingency fund or any other account deemed appropriate by the finance director for additional traffic enforcement.
Sergeant. Chief?
Evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. And thank you, as always, for your support. We couldn't do it without you. And we couldn't do it without the budget, which is our plan insofar as how we move forward with public safety. Our officers are doing an amazing job. They understand the priority of traffic safety within our community. And they're working hard every day. They were out there on Route 7 today. And everywhere I go, I hear from our citizens that they see us out there. They appreciate us out there. And they know that we are making an effect. Our officers have stopped over 850 vehicles in the last 10 weeks. They've given out infractions totaling $85,000 in the last 10 weeks.
And unfortunately, Chief, the town does not collect any of that money.
Right, exactly. So, you know, the officers are doing it because they want to affect public safety. They want to bring down accidents, which we believe we're doing. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we do have 42 less accidents this year than last year in this timeframe. And importantly, we're also trying to bring down those accidents with injury, which I can see a trend downward also. Last year, at this point, we had 57 accidents with injury. This year, we're at 42. So our goal is to keep trending that number down, just to improve overall safety on Route 7 and throughout the community. So this is occurring, and of course occurs with a cost, an added cost. We spent about $7,000 to this point, and that's since September 25th. So that came out of our overtime budget, which obviously was not initially planned for back in the budget discussions. So this $30,000 we're requesting includes that $7,000 reimbursement into our budget line, but also allows us to work, to provide steady enforcement on Route 7 and other important areas through the end of the fiscal year. So this money will take us through the next six months. And that gives us about $850 a week to apply towards this focus. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we will get a lot out of it. It'll be a steady pressure on Route 7. You know, we've done such a good job of bringing the speeds down and bringing awareness up, that we don't want to give up that pressure. We want to keep it going. And day by day, we want to show people that we're not going to give up on this effort, and that we're going to keep focusing on these areas. And this isn't our only stream of funding. We have grants that we have applied for also. For example, we have a DUI grant that we're going to be utilizing around Christmas and into the new year to focus on DUI. We have a distracted driving grant that we're going to be using in the spring. We're in the process of applying for other grants. And we're also intending on committing an officer to traffic enforcement only at different points during the next six months. So this is only part of our plan moving forward, but a necessary part.
Katie?
Thank you, Chief. I have a question I'm going to ask you because after you were last before us and you discussed, I had asked you about the distracted driving because I received some emails about that. And your answer was as it was just now. And so I would like it if you could just explain a little bit of why you, you know, we have the money that's going to come. You have a grant for one for distracted and DUIs. And how you determine when you would use those?
Yeah, so the grants are applicable only during certain periods. So it's the state that would give us the grant, and the state that would tell us when we have to utilize the grants. One thing with this money that we're asking for tonight is there's a little more discretion that I could use and apply that money in different timeframes where I think it might be more necessary than not.
Good. Thank you.
Alex?
Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
The money from the infractions, is it only infractions on Route 7 that the town doesn't get it, or all infractions?
All infractions.
Go to the state?
Correct.
Okay.
I must say, the state's been good and listening to us. And we've been having good communications with the commissioner's office. And he is understanding the good work that we do. So I think that's going to be reciprocal in the amount of grants that we receive over the next year.
I think it's very important for the community to know that all your hard efforts are helping the state coffers and not yours.
Yes. And as I said, we do for them.
So we're funding from within, so to speak. And that's very important for people to know.
Exactly.
The other thing, I'm very, very aware, driving on Route 7, I've been paying more attention. But, so I see the cruisers. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
But I also see pedestrians walking on the wrong sides of the roads and wearing dark clothing from dusk through into the nighttime. Can we do some kind of public service announcement, again, reminding people that if they add their bodies as pedestrians?
Absolutely.
They need to do something about being more visible. Because, and there are a lot of them. And you just can't see them. And then a car overreacts to a pedestrian, and there's another accident.
Many of those people, I see them as well. And many of those people are leaving jobs in our local restaurants. And the thought occurred to me when I saw one last week on my way home on one of those rainy nights, perhaps we might find a way to offer, you know, I have those high-vis vests we use when we do United Way things for people out in the parking lots, that maybe there's a way to reach out to the restaurants and just say, you know, if you have, somebody's working in the kitchen and they're leaving, they're walking on the wrong side of the road in their dark clothing. And maybe they could, you know, take advantage of getting some. They're not that expensive. Maybe the town could buy some.
I think they're both excellent ideas. Pedestrian safety is an excellent focus. We do have to remember that their safety is also important to us. And small ideas such as this could have a big impact.
Yes, I think so. You know, it only, it only take, I think some of them are just not aware.
Right.
That the danger there, that they're not seeing until it's too late.
Very hard to see in all the dark clothing.
Any other comments, questions?
Just real quick, thank you, Chief, for all you do.
I believe that not only infractions and tickets, but it's presence, being there. People seeing you can detour. So it's not all about how much, how many tickets. It's having a presence out there. Obviously, when you're coming north, Past Faith Church, and the cruiser sits there on the side, they see that. And then they kind of be careful all the way down through.
Yes, yes.
So my question, and she just mentioned it. So when the heart bus comes, and obviously now we're having more sidewalks and stuff, who's responsible for the placement of the heart bus signs? Is that something that's through the heart, or through the state, or a combination of both? Because I think now that the New Milfords are starting to put sidewalks in.
Maybe we can delegate those signs to a sidewalk area as opposed to people having to walk from a place of business to that heart sign to get picked up.
So the state's responsible for that. And of course, they work in conjunction with our DBW and the bus companies to make these determinations. But the state ultimately is responsible.
We did do that once.
Yeah. And I know that Katie had mentioned, but I too saw somebody walking from like McDonald's or somewhere. And they have to walk to the heart sign. And that's walking on the side of the road.
Are you getting coverage for all of those stops now?
That's Heart is working on it. That's part of the grant process that we're doing too. And Heart gets a federal grant for these bus shelters as well.
Gotcha.
And I did one time call them, this was several years ago. You probably remember that there was a one spot where everybody, they'd had, there was no place for them to stand.
Sure.
Except like right there on the shelf. And they actually did step up. I mean, they had to go through the process, of course.
Right. It's a process. And hopefully, in the years down the road, the whole Route 7 corridor will be sidewalks. So. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Paul?
You have a couple officers out right now on probably disability or sick, what have you?
Yes.
And we put on an officer last month. Do you have another officer coming onboard pretty soon?
Yes. As I said earlier, we are in the process of considering when to put that officer out. And the timing does depend upon staffing. My thought process is going to be after the holidays. We do have a DUI grant that we're going to be employing during the holidays, and that's going to get extra patrols out there. My thought process is in the middle of January. We're going to hit it hard again with that.
Can we dedicate him to the Route 7 corridor only?
Yes. So far, we have done that. There will be a point where I expand that coverage into Grove Street and then 202.
Okay. And are you possibly looking at more officers next budget?
Yeah. So, you know, as you said, the staffing is important for us to do this. So I would suggest and highly recommend that we do have another officer where we can at least dedicate that person to traffic enforcement throughout the year on a steady basis.
Well, you've certainly shown the impact of really focus. You know, not that you're not paying attention to it every day, 24 hours, but the fact that you can focus on something and make that much of a change.
Yes.
Is pretty much proof positive that someone should be.
Is there an equation you go by, like population for how many officers? Is there?
There are equations that are used nationally. How reliable they are, I don't understand because each community is different. You know, we have a very large expansive town. And that changes the dynamic rather than a smaller town. Populations play a role in those decisions, but so do crime rates, and so do traffic, and so do other things that the police department might offer. For example, we're very heavily involved in community policing. And we try to do enforcement, public safety, and community policing. And it's a lot to ask from our officers. So, you know, we do have, need to have the right number of staff available to continue to provide these high-level services to our community.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Now?
Thank you, Chief.
We had, no, excuse me. We had a request to suspend the rules and add something by Alex.
We voted against it.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, where was I?
Should I vote now with a motion?
Ah, yeah, I guess so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
See, I didn't write it down. If I don't write it.